Call order, the meeting of the City of Columbia Planting Commission on this October 8th, 2024. Our chairman Ted Sauter is not with us tonight, so I'm pinch hitting. And so I will ask Deanne, who's on on the video up there, to give her invocation and we'll all stand and join in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Deanne?
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us tonight, and we pray for your guidance during this meeting. Help us to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands.
Deanne, may you call the roll?
Scott?
Here.
Bobby?
Here.
Ted? Rick?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Okay, next, you received a copy of the minutes from the meeting, the Planning Commission meeting of September 10th, 2024. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none will be accepted as submitted. We have no old business on our agenda this evening, so I'm going to move to new business. And first on the agenda, we have a site plan review for Shelley Logan 202 East Park Avenue, Safe Retirement Solutions. Come forward. You can give us your name.
My name is Zachariah Parker. I'm Shelley's son.
Okay, very good. You want to tell us a little bit about what you're wanting to do?
So she she picked up the building by the park.
Excuse me one second. Should we have him put the mic up a little higher so we're getting him recorded? Is that good there? Yeah, that'll be great. It is on.
Green.
Is it on green?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please.
So we already have an office in Columbia in the plaza right over here, and we just need a bigger building, so that's the plan for the for that building.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Any renovations or just?
Yeah, we plan on renovating the inside of the building because it is a little bit outdated. She wants to add, I think, one or two more rooms into the building, so and some windows on the front.
Okay.
And then signage?
It's going to be, I think it's going to be similar to the sign that's on our building already. We're going to work with Bryce on the design on that.
Okay. When do you, are you thinking a timeline when you may make that change?
It it all depends on the work that gets done. As soon as that's done, we're ready to move. She did renew her lease for the building we're in, so we have that until August of next year, so.
Okay.
There's no real hurry in that respect.
Very good. Any other questions? Entertain a motion by anyone?
Make a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the site plan. For a second?
Second emotion.
We have a second. Any further questions? Deanne, may you call the roll?
Scott?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have a site plan review for Aaron McLaughlin, One South Main Street, Suite 103, and McLaughlin Insurance. Aaron?
Hi, Planning Commission, how are you?
Good. Great.
Last time I was here, I had the desire, obviously, to build a building, right? But in the interim, my business has grown and I need more space, pretty detrimental to what I'm doing. So Mark Brothers is here as well. He's been so kind as to offer a space for me to rent, so I would like to rent a space from him to put my insurance office, you know, the goal is obviously to still sell home, auto, business, and life insurance to the community and then those around the community as well, the best coverages for the best price I can possibly find.
First of all, we're really glad your business is expanding.
Thank you.
It's a good thing. Mark, do you have any comments? Yeah, that'd be good.
Yes, Aaron Aaron approached me about looking for a space because he needed more space and where he was at out in Yost Insurance, they were maybe looking for some of his space, so he was in a bit of a bind. And it happens to be the tack shop had finally moved out of our space. Frankly, I was going to leave it empty till we get our construction drawing done because that space is going to get a little bit of change when the elevator tower goes in that we talked about. But this worked out good because Aaron wants to build a place, so I gave him a month-to-month rent, just basically with 30 days' notice so that he can move in, continue to be in business. And when he's ready to go out there, then, you know, we'll be ready to do something with the with the building. So it's.
Very good.
That's about it.
Very good.
I'm very grateful that he's being so kind.
Good. That's great. Fantastic, Mark. Great news about what you just said previous to that about your building.
Yeah, we finished up the roof, so we did about a sixty, $65,000 new roof on there, so.
Wow.
So that's been done. My daughter is is in the middle of completing the, you know, you've seen the the renderings and some of those plans. Well, now she's in the middle of doing the the actual construction drawings so that we can we can phase out the project and go to bid on some of the stuff.
Okay, good. Very good. Great news.
Yep.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
With that, I'll make a motion. We approve the site plan review and submit it to Mr. McLaughlin.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more questions, comments on the motion? Hearing none, we'll ask Deanne to call the roll.
Bobby?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Aaron.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, we are going to hold a public hearing.
Excuse me, mayor. It's 7:15, so if you would like to, if you would like to alter the agenda.
To the other agenda items?
Certainly.
Thank you for that clarification. Since you have the mic on there, do you want to make some comments on these next two discussion points? Do you mind, Bryce?
Sure. So out at, I guess it would be 44952 St. Route 14, which is the site of the old 714 Truck Stop. The owner, James Sabatine, has requested to use that area as a vendor area, which would allow CN Sales, which you will see in item E, to set up there and sell their items up through November 5th of this year. So they did submit a letter to you from James Sabatine requesting the permission from Planning Commission to do that, and then you will also see there in item E the insurance information from CN Sales, but you would need a motion on both separately to, one, either approve or deny the vendor space, and then, two, either approve or deny the vendor site review from CN Sales.
So the way I read this is that he being Sabatine Junior is only requesting this on behalf of the other gentleman, so therefore, if anybody else wants to come and solicit in that area, he'd have to start over.
That's correct. In the letter, he said it would be up to the property owner's prerogative.
Would would this be the same vendor that was there last past weekend? Yes.
Yes.
And they were okay to do that, or they just chose to do it on their own?
The individual did have a solicitor's permit through the police department. They did obtain that. And we notified them last week that we had a planning commission meeting coming up and needed them to appear.
There was somebody on, I believe it was Friday, somebody who was on the southeast corner of the old Regis Market, and that corner selling political.
That was him.
Stuff.
That was him, and he got moved over.
Then he got moved over, okay.
Yes, I think there was some confusion as to what their site was.
I see. And I don't have a problem with that. I just.
So this is basically what we're doing is a one-time.
That's the way I read it.
A one-time thing, and we need to actually consider two motions. One to approve the permission to allow vendors to be located there on a on a temporary basis, and then another motion on the particular vendor. So.
Rick, with that being said, the way I interpret this was, I'm assuming we're making a motion to approve this vendor.
Right.
Vendors.
Because it says next, anybody else would come back to it again for this be a one-time deal for a one-time vendor.
Yes, but we have to have a motion to approve allowing him.
Right, we used plural. I'll try to make sure we don't say.
Well, there's going to be two motions.
You said plural, ven- vendors.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Vendor. Excuse me. So we need to, thank you for the correction. It's a ven- permission for the the property owner to have a vendor at that site. We need that motion first.
So I make a motion to approve Mr. Sabatine's request to have a vendor on site until November 5th, 2024.
There's a motion. We have second?
Yes, second.
There was a second from Bobby. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask Deanne to call the roll.
Rick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Now we're looking for a motion.
CN Sales.
To give permission to the vendor, CN Sales, to be allowed to sell merchandise to vendor at that location.
I'll make a motion. We approve that request.
There's a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any questions on the motion? Deanne, may you call the roll?
Jeff?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Now, out of sheer luck.
No, you're 10 seconds late.
7:15, and so we can now conduct our public hearing regarding the sign, the request from Tractor Supply Company for the sign, and the gentleman's here from.
Adam Signs.
Okay, wait, say it right.
My name is Jason Green. I represent Adam Signs, not the manufacturer, but the installer of what would be the signs. Two wall signs, one main building and one garden center sign. May I add in something? Thank you very sincerely.
We're going to let you tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Well, those signs are not complex by any stretch of the imagination, but they're asking for them to be bigger than what you would normally allow. But I wanted to thank you for doing the pledge and a prayer, because the only time I see that is at our Rotary, and I've been to 100 of these, and it's only the second time I've ever seen it in a zoning, so thank you for keeping the basic.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. So they want two signs, and they want them a little bigger, one a lot bigger, and one a little bigger than what you would normally allow. How big will you allow? Because the one they want almost twice as big, and the one I think it's five or eight square feet over.
Did they give her the pole sign?
They did. I didn't hear the story, the backstory of why, but they did.
And then these would be facing east, both of them, or one would be facing north, the garden face the north?
I have no idea.
They're both going to be facing. So there was nothing was shined upon the condo association? They'd be facing north. Am I correct? One north, one east? Yeah, they do. I don't have that. So plant south here is sprinkling. One's facing spring? One would be facing south, though, and one east. No, they're both on that face of the building. No, well, okay. They'd be facing like north, north, northeast. But they're facing away from the condo association. The condo beater back, the front door is up here. Correct, they'd be facing more towards the ways. So they're both on the front wall, or you don't know?
Don't know.
But they are going to be wall-mounted, right? Nope, nope. Pole sign.
No, no, they drop light for some reason. Yeah.
Beyond the building, not facing the plane. So the request is because the sign is bigger than what we allow?
Yes. Yeah, I think the one's almost twice as big. It seemed like it's 196, and you normally go with right about 100.
105, I think.
105. I don't have anything to do with those half. I just am portraying the information.
Just to clarify, so both of the signs would be facing east, so like if you're standing in the TikTok parking lot, you would see them. That's the side that you're facing on. The main sign is they're requesting 192 square feet. Our code permits 100. And the garden center sign, based on the calculations that we had to do, it was allowed to have 80 square feet, and that one is 85. And speaking to Mr. Soy's thoughts on the pylon sign, so there is still a pylon sign in the plan, but I believe it would be through a different company because you're going to do it in partnership with Dollar Tree.
So they're coming to us next?
If their sign does not need a variance, no, they will not appear.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Green? And we'll anticipate that you'll stay here during the public discussion.
If you'd like me to, absolutely.
I'd like you to.
And that will be about right now, absolutely. Want me to go sit down or just stay here? Okay.
I think that would be, I think that'd be the most appropriate way to do it, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
So I know that the the neighbors have been notified, correct, Bryce?
Yes, all neighbors had to be notified. They're within 200 feet of the property.
Okay, so at this time, we will entertain any public comments and questions or anything regarding this request for variance, which this Planning Commission will consider after we hear conduct the public hearing. So basically, we've tried to lay out what the parameters of the variance are about, so is, does anyone wish to come forward and speak to this matter? Yes, sir. Just give us your name. That'd be great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Webb, John Webb. I go by Jack. And I live in the meadows.
Okay.
I can't honestly say that I have an issue with the the size of the sign because it won't be facing in my direction. The back of the building is the only thing that we see. What I am concerned about is the what we have in place right now as far as the city ordinance is concerned. If we would, if we would change it for Tractor Supply, what is, say, Vape for an example, for example, is going, how are they going to feel because of what happened with their sign? I didn't like their sign. I'm glad it was changed. But if we set a precedence, where's it going to end? So like I said, I, the sign's not going to be affecting me because it's going to be facing the other direction. I'm just concerned with keeping the city basically the way it is and not letting it get out of hand, that's all. And that that's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, legitimate question. I think that's a good point. Anybody want to make comment? Mr. Webb's statement?
Go ahead, I can take it.
You were in the U.S. Army, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
I'm just going to make a comment. You know, I think, I think our best approach to this is the common sense approach. You say you don't want to see things get out of hand. If I, if I had to weigh in on on a larger sign at the Tractor Supply, if it were on the back of the building, I'd probably, I wouldn't be in favor at all because that's going to affect you. It's going to affect other people. But it's going to face east, and east is commercial property. I don't think we ever have to worry about residential occupancy anywhere that's going to be affected by a larger sign that we would improve. And if it were to open a can of worms or start a firestorm and say, hey, you did it for Tractor Supply, let's do it for us. We're going to keep that same common sense approach to to allowing something like that. And I think as long, if we're going to approve that, I think we'd do it with that approach and say it it's okay for there because it makes sense, and we could use that argument in any future decision we might be faced with, but that would be my explanation.
And Drug Mart came with the same questions because they wanted to, we gave them, what, 17 different signs?
Right.
That was a tough, you know, everything you said, we've all looked at.
But there were people right across the street there as well.
Yeah, Drug Mart, Drug Mart is different than us because Drug Mart has all those residents across.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
What I'm saying, what you said about the size of signs and stuff, we had the same situation with Drug Mart. Drug Mart wanted more signs than we allow and a little bit bigger sign on top and.
And I, how was the rule? I don't know what the ruling was.
Well, it passed, but.
We approved that.
We approved it, but.
That variant.
We're watching what you're saying.
And and not to interrupt Jeff, but you know, that that signage is going to be building mounted.
Right.
And and there's a pretty good front parking area there, so it's back a little bit. It's not like it's going to sit out at us.
Well, like I said, my concern is not so much the sign as it is setting a precedent.
For the, yeah.
As far as the video is concerned.
And that's why they have to come to us for that, for that approval, which protects just what you're mentioning.
But the leg- the legality part of it, if if some corporation wanted to take a legal stance on it, where would we stand then?
I think our zoning is written, our zoning is written, correct me wrong, on a basis-by-basis approval.
Okay.
Am I correct on that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. So in other words, if ABC came here and said they wanted to put this big, huge sign up, we can vote it no and not have a legality problem.
Okay. Those are things that, you know, that I'm not aware of, but I just, I just don't want, you know, we, we've only lived here 14 years and we came from another community, and we're very happy with Columbia, and and we'd like to see it stay the way it is, small, you know, and reasonable. So that's the reason why I'm, you know, questioning as far as the legality of it. I just don't want to see anything happen to town, that's all. All right, that's all I have. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, and thank you for your words about the city and and it's we appreciate the fact you like to live here, and growth is a funny, it's a funny animal, and that's what you pointed out as we.
We, as as a community, was against Tractor Supply. And to be honest with you, in our opinion.
Sir, you want to come back up?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Most of the neighbors, maybe not Deanne because she's facing it, but most of the neighbors are are believe that the property looks better now than it did. So we actually have kind of changed our thinking as far as the property is concerned because it does actually look better than what it did the way it was. The only problem is now we have animals, wild animals in our neighborhood. Now I have a groundhog living under my deck.
Oh, boy.
So, you know, those bulldozers have a way of messing up somebody's home. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Since we got a notice, I'm Kevin Todd. I'm the secretary of the Allen Lodge Temple Company. And just to be clear, we have no objections to the signs either. Our objection, our our attention all along has been what happens to the water runoff from Tractor Supply, and it seems to be we're keeping an eye on it, but it seems that maybe it's going to be handled. I just wanted, since we got notified, I thought we'd show up and say we don't really have a problem with the signs.
Thank you very much for coming, and I think you've, that's a matter for, you know, that we've discussed, but I think it's important to, you know, those issues are dealt with. Very good. Any other public comments on the sign variance request?
The only comment from the peanut gallery, that would be me. 129415 establishes what the standards for granting a variance for a sign are. And that's basically what you need to look at to determine, and really, it's on a case-by-case versus as far as signage.
Okay, that is Mark Hudson, our municipal attorney, speaking there from somewhere else in the world. And he's clarifying that point. So, very good. If there are no other comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. Hearing is now closed. So the matter at hand is that the Planning Commission now has conducted the public hearing, and we have a request for these, the sign variance. And we'll ask if we can entertain a motion to approve this variance. Nobody wants to make the motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the Tractor Supply variance for the two signs in question. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. So we have a motion on the floor. Does anybody up here want to say anything about the motion? I think we've received received clarification on two different occasions, on Mr. Webb's comments on you know, being concerned about setting a precedent, that we had our attorney, as well as one of the members up here, speak to the fact that it's case-by-case, which is very important to all of us that we get that done, so I'm just saying that for the record. Were there any other comments regarding the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask Deanne to call the roll.
Okay, just so I have it correct, was it Jeff that made the motion and Scott that seconded?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Scott?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Motion has passed. The variance is approved. Okay, we have no other further reviews or agendas under new business, so I'm moving to commission comments. So I'm moving to commission comments. I'm wondering if anyone here, up here at the ta- at the table, would like to make any comments tonight? Any words of wisdom? Now, we always ask if the public would like to make any comments. Any comments out there? Anybody, anything anyone wants to say? The three things, Mr. Webb, I wanna comment on. Um, and I'll take liberties to do this, is I appreciate you reacting to the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. And the third thing we do in Columbia is we always ask for public input at every one of our meetings. And we have, we feel that's very, very important. So those three things we're doing tonight, so. Yes. Yeah, come on up, Kevin.
Hi, um, I'm kinda Kevin Todd again from Allen Lodge Temple Company. I'm kinda curious about what the criteria is that generates the public note or the public notice, the notice the neighbors about something going on. We got the notice for the signs on Tractor Supply. That's the first notice we've ever had about anything. I didn't know whether uh there are some of the criteria where notices are sent out or?
That's a very good question. Why don't you answer it, Bryce?
So it's, it's written in our code based on different things that happen. So for assigned variance, for example, we have to notify everybody within two hundred feet. And they have to have um you know, at least ten days' notice prior to the meeting. Um, so we get those out as soon as we can, so everybody's able to do that. And, you know, with certified mail, it is a little costly, but um our code says to get that out. Uh, so that would be for a variance. For another example, Board of Zoning Appeals, which is another board that we have here in the city, um, you have to notify contiguous property owners or property owners directly across the street. And that also requires certified letter notice, but that has a publication in the newspaper with that one. And um and also, you know, that public notice at least fifteen days ahead of time. So it really is just based on our code, um depending what happens. But um for this instance, it was a sign that you got notified for.
It just seemed kinda curious that the sign, request for a sign variance generated that kind of a notice where the the Tractor Supply itself was.
Well, because the signs are bigger than what we allow.
Oh, I understand all that. I'm just kinda curious as though Tractor Supply, and I don't mean they like they just showed up, but the whole, the whole effort for Tractor Supply, you know, we were never notified about anything. I think we just happened to, I think my sister-in-law lives in the meadows or something, and she made a comment about the last meeting I was at. That's the only reason I even knew to come when they were um first throwing out their plans, so. It just kinda seemed kinda curious that we would get notice on something as small as a sign change and not notice on the fact that they're putting a whole building in.
Right, and then Tractor Supply and Dollar Tree, so that piece of land is zone C four. So both of those are permitted to be in that district, which wouldn't qualify for any public notice because that land is for it.
Because it fits inside the rules?
Correct. Now, if there was a zone change, for example, if somebody requested a zone change, that would notify um, but what's good on our Planning Commission website, we do post the agendas of the meetings that are coming up. So anybody in the public can take a look and peruse as to what might be coming in front of the meetings. And uh we do these meetings second Tuesday of every month.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Good questions. Everything, basically, the city do does through ordinances, and there are all of these regulations that are really passed ordinances since nineteen seventy-four, when the charter form of government was set up in Columbia. That's when all the ordinances started to be developed to manage the growth of the city. So that's a little bit of a lesson. Very good question. Any other public comments?
I'll just add to that, uh, Mr. Mayor. Typically, a lot of the code sections in our own code are based on Ohio Revised Code sections, and a lot of state law sections require public notice or publication of different things that take place within the municipality such as Columbia. Um, in general, if you're affecting the rights, I'd say of um more than just a few people, that's where you'll start seeing statutes and code sections that require some type of notification. So it, it's not a real hard and fast rule, this does, that doesn't. But the explanation that Bryce gave as to Tractor Supply and Dollar Tree, that's correct. That's a C four zoned district. Those are appropriate uses, which is what the zoning code is speaking to, is the use of property. Those are appropriate. That's right in the code. So when they start their process, we may have questions such as tonight regarding their signage. But in general, they're a permitted use if they follow our code sections on design, on, you know, what they have to do in order to build the facilities.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, Mark. Thank you. Any other comments? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.